For which it stands, one nation, under God, municipal with liberty and justice for all.
Rolt.
Brad Cassoon.
Here.
Tobin. Finer.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
John Francois.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Correspondence.
Nothing this evening.
For the good of the city, I would like to call up Don. I think we have a presentation from our 2019 audit.
Good evening. How's everybody tonight? Linda Hannigan, who is the partner on our audit, is going to join us on the virtual, I'm not sure.
Whatever you call it.
Whatever you call it, and give a presentation. I think you'll find it good. And I sent all of you's, both the financial statements and the common council report. I have a true for copy, hard copies here for anybody who wants one for tonight. And with the grace of God, Linda will be up next.
Linda?
Linda, if you'd like to unmute yourself, you're ready to speak.
Good evening, council members, mayor, public. I want to go over the highlights of our reports that Don just mentioned. The first thing we'd like to do is to thank Don, Janet, and their whole team for working with us this year. The whole audit was conducted as remotely, which meant getting electronic copies of everything, communicating back and forth frequently during the audit. It is a little more difficult than when we conduct our audits in person, but it went well. We can tell that it is a capsule that we've seen big improvements this year. We have fewer audit entries, we have several findings being satisfied, and there are no new original findings this year as well. We feel that the city's hard work is evident in the results this year. The findings that we did have were just reviewed and discussed with both Don and Janet. Then I just want to take you through the financial statement reports. I'll just be commenting on the highlights, and if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. So, the first and most important part of our audit is our auditor's opinion. That's on pages one. All my page references will be to the actual page references, not the PDF pages. So, our auditor opinion is on pages one and two. It's what's known as a clean opinion. The financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And that is the most important thing for the city. The next section is management's discussion and analysis. That's pages three through eight. That section focuses on the government-wide information, which I'll briefly explain in a minute, but it gives an overview, let's say, in less technical language. The statements, the general wide statements are just two. One is a statement of net position, and what's unique about it is that it includes all of the city's assets, including its capital assets. The total assets amount to $196 million, and which 114 million is your capital assets after depreciation. The internal liabilities is $253 million, but 112 million of that pertains to the estimate of other post-employment benefits. So, the result is that your net position is at negative $56 million. However, again, as I mentioned, it's also after conducting this other post-employment benefit estimate. The fund and financial statements, which are on pages 11 through 16, are the statements that are prepared on the same basis as your budget. So, there, it's important to note first, as far as the balance sheet is concerned, the arrangement of fund balance. So, both the general fund and the predevelopment funds ended in small increases in fund balance. Water and sewer had decreases in fund balance, but they, those amounts were less than what was planned, meaning that for 2019, the city had planned to use appropriate fund balance, but used less. So, that's also a positive. The general fund now has a $10 million unassigned fund balance, and the other funds all have higher, less of less, higher fund balances, but still impositive. The footnotes within the largest part of the report, pages 17 through 41, describes the policies, major assets, and liabilities in financial statements. The required schedules, pages 42 to 51, contain the most important things, like to the council, your budget comparisons. And of those budget comparisons, the general fund had the total expenditures under budget by $4 million, which is excellent in terms of showing budgetary control and obviously contributing to the fact that the end-of-year fund balance increased. The other supplementary schedules, from pages 52 to 65, include the federal and state single owner report. There, there's three opinions there. They're all clean opinions. So, that is the highlights of the city's reports. And we ask if there's any questions or anyone might add for me.
Okay. At this time, any questions from the council? We have no questions. Mayor, do you have any questions or concerns? No. Don, we're good?
Yeah. I guess Linda, I think that'll be it, if everybody's satisfied.
We're all good?
All good.
Thanks, Linda.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Okay. Anyone else in here would like to address the council? Please step forward. You have three minutes.
My name is Ralph John Savariz. I live at 36 Lennox Place. Two things real quick. Last Thursday evening, I happened to be driving on Wisner into North, and I saw several police vehicles there, and two individuals totally out of control. There's a lot that you see on TV and in the media, Seattle, Minneapolis. This was done by the book. The police officers did it with restraint, and I was very concerned because as I pulled to the side, a guy came out with one of these big phone cameras. And I stayed there because I wanted to watch the whole thing. So, if there was any complaints or concerns, I told Officer Dolan about this. It was done by the book. So, they need to be commended for that because that could have been a real I saw. Second thing is, Andrew, you got a haircut. Very good. Last Wednesday, we had a meeting about a concern of the residents in the area with regard to the putting of the warming station into the temple. And I think, Andrew, you took most of the calls to arrange this meeting, that none of the people there were in favor of it. At no time was this an indictment against the warming station. The concern is the safety, security, and the quality of life in the area. On Lennox Place, we have several single women. We have an elderly couple right on the corner. We have an abandoned building at 30 Lennox Place, which we're trying to address. There are serious safety concerns. I've been in the business with the homeless for 15 years. I know this population very, very well. Yes, in most cases, there's no problems, but in some cases, there are problems, including a death that we had in Newburgh, May 17, 2017, where a resident was killed by another resident. So, these are the concerns that we had, and we felt very, very bad because of the lack of transparency on this issue. We came to this meeting. Some people came all the way from the city, had to arrange daycare, childcare, only to be that this was a done deal. And that's wrong. We're not done yet. We'll be back probably at the next meeting with a lot more people. We know this is not a city problem, and as the mayor clearly articulated at that meeting, this is a county issue, and the county needs to step up to the plate. You know, the city of Middletown provides food. It provides shelter. It provides a lot of things, but you know what? This is not their baby. So, I just wanted to articulate that. Most of my folks couldn't be here tonight, but this is not an end to the story. And very, very concerned about the lack of transparency in this issue, the lack of honesty. I was told by a key player over there that the mayor was for this, that my neighbors were for this, only to find out the opposite was true. So, like I said, the story's not going to end. And just to make you aware so that you're transparent in terms of what this situation is and why we are. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the council? Eileen, do we have a online?
Yes, we do. We have a Robin. Robin, go ahead.
Yes. Good evening, council. I'm addressing the James Street parking situation. I am the property manager for the Corbett Manor, and we got notice today that there will be no overnight parking, and the alternative parking spots are too far for my residents to go to. They, my residents age from at least 55, but up to 90. I mean, 93, she's sitting here. And I have 17 residents who have cars. It would be, it would not, it would not behoove them to be able to go over to where you're asking us to go, especially in the winter. It would be a hardship. I have at least seven handicap licensed drivers. So, I'm asking that we do, either you issue maybe some type of certificate or permit that my residents will be able to park in the James Street parking lot overnight. It would be a great hardship to this building.
Okay. Thank you. We'll forward at the DPW. Do we have anyone else?
Murma, did you wish to speak? Just give it one moment, please. I think we're okay.
Okay. All right. That's it for the good of the city. Mayor?
The first thing I'd like to address is the construction parking issue and the short-term changes that are being made to accommodate not only all the residents in downtown, but also the businesses in downtown. As you know, this side of the James Street parking lot, although it appears to be a little bit smaller, we're only losing about four or five spaces. We're going to have 50 spaces there, including handicap parking. James Street parking was never meant to accommodate any specific building. If so, we would not have any development downtown because if the public parking is all addressed by tenants, others are not going to make investment in property. That's why when that specific building was constructed, I was here. And it was done in 2002, 2003, when the renovations were made. And I'm not sure if, Robin, if you were around back then, but certainly Mr. Ferante, who contacted City Hall today, his dad, who was the owner of the building and developer of the building, that was supposed to be made clear to the tenants of that building that that is not overnight parking for any one building. That in fact, there's a resolution that was passed in 2002 and then reaffirmed in 2003 dedicating 14 spots in the Canal Street lot, making that available for rent to any occupant of the Canal Street building. So, Crawford Building, I'm sorry. So, why the owners of that building would have created a hardship by accepting tenants who have a disability and that required door-to-door parking without informing them of the, of the deal that they made with the city back in 2003, that you need to, you need to be, in your parking situation, you need to park on Canal Street or in open parking. And unfortunately, we don't have eight or nine handicap spaces there. We don't have the ability to accommodate 17 cars from that one building, or six cars from another, or 20 cars from another. Otherwise, we're back into a chaotic parking situation. So, I apologize if Crawford's building accepted you as a tenant and informed you as a tenant that you could park there forever, as long as you were there as a tenant, without a, any cost or with the understanding that you had dedicated parking. They don't, just like the others who have called over the years and have asked us for either handicap parking or private parking in any of the city lots. We're making a huge investment. The concept, we're doing a parking management plan, but from this perspective, it's, all it is, is, this round is the, is during construction, some people are going to be inconvenienced. So, they're going to need help. I would urge the management to make some accommodation with the, with the tenants, since they failed them in notifying them about the parking situation when they became tenants, that they can possibly offer some kind of shuttle. It's only about 500 feet, but I understand for an 80 or 90-year-old person, that's quite substantial. So, I think the burden is on the management of any building downtown that does not provide private parking to make the accommodation for their tenants. They're receiving the rent, not, the, so they need to make, and if they do not inform them, then that could probably be a reason for possibly breaking the lease and maybe locating into a facility that does have dedicated parking for those who are going to have that kind of problem. But you can only assume, you can assume the amount of requests that we will get from people in the downtown area. We get it now on streets for handicap parking and private streets, but with the density of population in downtown and the limited parking, I don't think it's something that we can do, especially during the construction phase. We are looking about long-term accommodations as we move forward, but there, under no scenario do I see any immediate parking, guaranteed parking for specific apartments or specific buildings outside of the apartment units that they're looking at. This is public parking, and it's public for a reason, and, and other people have made substantial investments in and around downtown based on the fact that there is public parking available. So, it's complex, I feel, for those, but I think the burden should be on Crawford management. I would be willing to sit down with them and talk to them about a different pattern of what they can provide in regards to access to the vehicles. We do have a senior van that will pick people up door-to-door and do, either bring them to their car or bring them to shopping if they like. I don't know if they're aware of those types of programs that we do have, but it is a door-to-door service. So, we can accommodate to a certain point, but I can assure you that guaranteed parking for specific buildings and specific units is not in the foreseeable future. So, I apologize, and I think Crawford management has some responsibility here, again, in letting their tenants know that they were guaranteed with some type of parking, open public parking. On the, let me get the clicker here. Moving forward, I was going to talk about this issue tonight despite the call, so I might as well go through with the council and through the public with the details. As you know, the, the side, the motor vehicle side of the James Street parking reconstruction is completed, nearly completed. We still have the landscaping to do, and we still have Festival Square to do. We anticipate opening that parking lot up tomorrow morning, and then the other side of the parking lot towards the Poor Bobby's area will be, construction will begin on that. So, that, people were advised. We did door-to-door with the police department and community development. We did notify building owners. And obviously, people have seen construction in and around the downtown area, so people know something is happening. The fences have been up since last week, so we've been able to address any incoming calls that we received, and we're going to be posting everything on social media and the city website tomorrow, including maps of where people can park long-term in downtown. So, the James Street lot will be two-hour parking from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., Monday through Friday. Weekends, Saturday and Sunday is open parking. And primarily, the volume of people that go into motor vehicle and that some of the other businesses, if we allowed more than two-hour parking, and of course, it's not enforced at 2:01 of your, of your visit, we will be doing parking enforcement, though, that you're, otherwise, people wouldn't be doing any business in downtown. So, motor vehicle's not open on weekends. It does take up a lot of, a lot of the parking spaces. The courts are not open. City Hall's not open. So, we decided that we would do what a lot of communities do and keep it restricted to the times of Monday through Friday. And in that specific lot alone, which handles 50 people and is primarily the handicap parking for City Hall also, that, and other businesses, that we would have no overnight parking so we can accommodate everyone's needs. 30 West Main Street parking lot and the Orchard Street, the new lot. The Orchard Street lot has no, as John informed me today, we had no regulations on it at this point. Same principles apply with the exception of overnight parking. We're going to have two-hour parking from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. Now, one question that was posed to me by a member of city government was why are we going to a time of, say, 9:00 p.m. rather than going like 9:00 to 5:00 or 9:00 to 6:00? We've done a lot of reading, a lot of studying on how parking regulations impact a center city. And if you had parking regulations only 9:00 to 5:00, when people left, you know, their business and, and went home or left their employment, if somebody parked their car at 5:15, or, I mean, at, at 3:15, they would theoretically be able to park there all night because after 5:00 o'clock, the parking enforcement stopped. So, we had to stretch it out. We have three new viable businesses in the, in the old Woolworths building. We did make commitments to them about providing additional parking under the DRI, and they, they have substantial investment, so we need to turn over accessible parking. So, there will be overnight parking allowed there. So, if someone's parking there overnight, as long as they move their car by 10:00 a.m., because they, restrictions start at 8:00, they have their two hours. So, as long as they move their car by 10:00 a.m. out of that parking lot, they're fine. So, we thought that was a reasonable, a reasonable approach for those two lots. The 18 West Main Street lot between Olivia's and Middletown Press, we are going to have two-hour parking in that lot also, Monday through Friday. We're going to change the pattern because we're looking at doing it permanently anyway. It's a narrow lot. The way the parking is laid out, we have a lot of problems, especially coming out onto the South Street side. So, we're going to change one-way ingress off of West Main and then have the egress out into South Street. We'll put a new curb cut in there, you know, in the upcoming, hopefully within a week or so. And we're also going to ban commercial vehicles unless, of course, they're associated. The Middletown Press building has guarantee of some of those spots there. So, that would be their, their parking area. The 7-27 East Main Street lot, which is the behind-run for Downtown Park, is also a new parking area that was recently reconstructed. We're going to do the 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. No commercial vehicles are authorized. What we have noticed is a lot of businesses, and we've had this discussion for 20 years in downtown Middletown, where businesspeople parking their own vehicles, their employees parking, their tenants parking, and, you know, and it creates a parking shortage when in fact, I don't believe we do have a parking shortage. We do have the Paramount lots. We do have the new lot, as I mentioned, on Orchard Street. So, in this area also, we will be designating a motorcycle parking area so they can park motorcycles in designated areas only. We're planning on distributing all of that information along with this construction parking plan map for downtown Middletown. It identifies all the lots you can park in overnight with no restrictions or very limited restrictions. We feel that it's very basic economic development where you keep your center core area, you turn that parking spots over, and your employees, your tenants, your merchants, and so on, they park in your perimeter lots. I mentioned the walking distance from Crawford front door to, to Canal Street will be about 500 feet when Festival Square is done. It'll be down the ramp, all handicap accessible, down the ramp, and then right over to Canal Street. It's a 500-foot walk. And I, as I mentioned, I understand for someone who's 80 or 90 years old, that could be cumbersome. So, Crawford will have to make some kind of accommodations for their tenants. The today's story was about a positive story regarding the new faces in downtown. We have had a lot of success. Maria deserves a lot of credit in her department for the work they've been doing throughout the pandemic, and we've been doing a lot of outreach, and we're gaining somewhat of a reputation. And again, one of the reasons why these folks are here is they see the investment that we're making, and they're willing to invest their money into these businesses in downtown. These are six of the businesses that are opening, and we're very thankful for the, for their confidence in our community. And I believe two or three of them are already booked until November with their appointments. So, this is the issue that was addressed by Mr. Savariz. It was quite a meeting. We started at 7:30, and I believe I didn't get out of here till well after 11:00. The meeting lasted for over two and a half hours. I tried to give everybody a chance to voice their, voice their opinion. I think everybody saw the, what the other side was saying. It's not the best situation. As I stated at the meeting, since the warming station concept was introduced back in Middletown in 2006, 2007, I wasn't in office back then, but I was not a supporter of how they do it. I thought it was a little unfair at points where, when the neighbors voiced a concern about the warming center being in their neighborhood, there were attempts to portray them as uncaring people. And I don't think that was the case. I think people had a lot of concern. They have a lot of fear, all legitimate, based on the operations of warming centers. They don't do background checks. They don't do certain things that are normally done at a homeless shelter, and that's why they're out of the county operation. But on the, on the second hand, these are residential neighborhoods, and when, even when it's a downtown, downtown merchants had the same concerns, and so do downtown residents had the same concerns. So, I raised the issue, and I've been raising it for 10 years. Jerry knows because I've been at the meetings with him, with the Interfaith Council, that this is not a Middletown problem. Middletown should be part of the solution, but so should other communities in this county. But the agency or the government agency that is responsible for this is Orange County, and there are solutions that other counties do that make it more amenable to a community and provide a better service and that don't impact a neighborhood. One example was given, and I found it to be quite offensive, was that, well, you're at ShopRite, and you don't, you don't know if the person behind you in ShopRite is on parole or, or a convicted sex offender, and you don't. So, why do you go to ShopRite? But basically was the... But basically was the, the, the point they were trying to make. If you're so afraid, why do you go to ShopRite? Well, this is their home. And that's a big difference. When you're home, you expect a certain amount of safety, you expect the community to be behind you in a certain way, and to protect your home. There were issues brought up about bus stops, which was one of the positives that came out of the meeting, the possibility about moving some of the bus stops. And also, another positive that came out of the meeting was the willingness of the rabbi to also sit on a task force to see if we can work with Orange County government to get a permanent solution to homeless warming centers in Orange County. And I don't know if that possibility exists, but I think there are many options. Rockland Psych, Rockland County has, as I mentioned earlier, has a beautiful plan. They bring them to a former public building that they have four bus stops or four pickup spots twice a day, when temperatures drop below 32 degrees during the day, or during a blizzard. They don't say 7:00 o'clock in the morning, you have to leave, get out. They keep it open 24 hours a day. So in many ways, it's a better service for the clients that they're trying to protect. So my question to the, and we'll have more meetings with the Greater Middletown Interfaith Council, and I applaud them for what they're doing. I, I do. These are people that have, stay all night in a basement of a church to allow others to stay out, get out of the cold. So they deserve a lot of credit. I just think there's a better way to do it, there's a safer way to do it, and that we can be part of that solution through this task force, if they're willing to, at least, and I think they will, come to the table. So the rabbi will, the temple, both the president, Mr. Shurter, or, no, I went to school with his cousin, Sternman, yes, yes. Mr. Sternman and Paula Blumenau, and even the rabbi, they all apologized for the poor communication that was, that resulted in a vote prior to the public session. So I think we're trying to, we're going to continue to address the neighbors' concerns. Chief Wawantu spoke, he gave some statistics. We're going to do what we can in the area patrol during the, you know, 8:30 to 9:30 lineup time, and in the morning on the release time. But the chief made it clear, there are no guarantees, it's based on volume of call, that whether we can have patrol up in that area. So, so there are a lot of things outstanding, as Mr. Savaris said, that the neighbors are not happy about. But I know myself, Andrew, and Jerry, I don't know how many calls you receive, but I try to communicate with the neighbors. I did send out letters, I did send out public policy statements online, I did make, do Facebook posts on it, related to it, return calls as they came in, spoke to people. But in the end, the city has no say on this matter, because it's a religious institution. And under the thought process back in '06, '07, and I assume it's a correct process, because other churches do, do the same thing, that the, that they have a right to do this. But they do have the right, and the question is whether the neighbors have a right to object, and I think they have a right also. So our government needs to bring people together and see, and not, I mean, the neighbors, I think the neighbors are going to continue to raise concerns as they were encouraged to do. The rabbi said that, and Mr. Sternman committed that the temple board vote was only for one year, but did not preclude a second year, that depending upon the circumstances with COVID. St. Paul's does want it back, so, but even with St. Paul's, we should be looking at these other options, because it does become a burden on the city of Middletown. And I just gave an example at that meeting of, the Interfaith Council has been very active in trying to get other communities to open warming stations. And they've had some success with Port Jervis, I believe Newburgh has one also. Monroe opened one, and the Village of Monroe closed it down. And the, closed it down, I don't know if they closed it down legally, but the church, I believe it was Sacred Heart, where they were doing it, decided it wasn't worth the agitating the village over, and did not pursue any kind of legal action. But I thought it was the wrong move by them, because I sent the bad message. But, and maybe it was the right move from the residents' perspective. But we, as a community, we don't have any legal standing to close the facility. We have a responsibility to make the facility as safe as we possibly can and to address some of the concerns of those neighbors on a daily basis. They also agreed to some changes, then the way that St. Paul's was operating. One of the questions was about weapons. And by weapons, I think the, it was down to a, a lot of homeless folks will have a box cutter with them, that they are checked for weapons at the door, but they are returned to the people in the morning. And that, and that police investigations were not allowed into St. Paul's, because they had a sanctuary status. But the temple will allow the Middletown Police Department into the temple to conduct any type of investigation that they need to do. So there was some positive that came out of the meeting. But I still understand the concerns of the neighbors, we'll work on it on a daily basis. I encourage them to call my office, call Chief Wawantu directly, call your alderman, and express your concerns to them, and we will try to address situations immediately as they develop. Back on the COVID, this is the latest count for Orange County, and Middletown is still number two in that area, and still a big concern. Don't be fooled by the 1% or less for a month, that nationally, it's still a big concern, and they do anticipate it coming back. We encourage everyone to get your flu shot, if your doctor says you can have a flu shot. But I got mine on Friday. But it's important to continue to wear a mask, as long as you're unable to social distance, but let's all do our share. The coronavirus small business loan program, a lot of businesses are starting to open back up. If you need working capital, 0%, this can be used as working capital, unlike our fixed asset loans. You must meet the HUD eligibility requirements and HUD guidelines. We've also opened a, a, I don't know the appropriate term for it, it's not daycare and it's not preschool. It's at our rec center, where students of, children of essential city employees can have their kids there, where they can, during the day while they're working, and it's not conducted like a daycare or a preschool, but it is a-
Academic persistent-
Academic assistant program, said Chris. So, but it is students there, they do pay. It's $100 a week per child, much less than what other, you know, what it would cost to send them to a private facility. But we were hoping to get some HUD money for that, and we do, if 51% or more of the applicants met the criteria of HUD eligibility. Unfortunately, or fortunately, I guess, they don't, because they have their higher income than, than the HUD permitted, so. But we do have the program, we are offering it, and we will offer it as long as, as school is not in session. Remember, register to vote. We will be running the city bus for early voting. The senior bus will do pickup, door to door. Apolitical, well, we don't ask party, we don't ask who you're voting for. All you have to do is call the senior center, and to let them know you want to vote, and they will bring you on the designated days to vote early at the Middletown Senior Center. And if you want to register to vote, and you haven't done so, please do so here. The information's here online. And the last point is to fill out the census. We are still lagging behind, we're closer to the state numbers. I didn't check today, but we were closer as of a few days ago. And hopefully, the fact that we're, all of our funding is based on this, hopefully will sink in with some people, and they will fill out the census. Any questions?
Alden McCliner?
Thank you. A question I was asked to ask you from our constituents' meeting is about Halloween. Do we have any rules, regulations? Will we have Halloween? Do we know, do we have any plans yet?
The governor today announced that he is not canceling Halloween.
Okay.
So I'm, I don't know how you cancel Halloween, anyway. You know, we're not going to go out and arrest, you know, eight-year-old kids and give them a ticket, so. I think people need to use caution. I think our rec department is making plans for a Halloween train a couple nights during that week, where they'll be going to different neighborhoods and distributing candy. I think people, I don't know, I have a six-year-old grandson, I'm, hopefully, my daughter is not going to be bringing her to strangers' houses and getting candy or things that are touched by others. What I've read online, what other communities are doing, they're encouraging people to bring it to your relatives' house, get your kids dressed up, bring it to maybe good friend's house, but not to walk streets, to go point A to point B, and then, then return. But, so we will not be canceling Halloween.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not the Grinch who stole Christmas, either.
Who stole Halloween, yeah. Anyone else on the green?
Actually, speaking of the Grinch that stole Christmas, I have received questions about our tree lighting. Do we have any idea what it's kind of looking like this year, or any preliminary plans?
We're waiting for Jacob to dig the hole.
Okay.
It's the, we do plan on having a tree lighting, but not in the traditional sense.
Sure.
We will have a tree there, but it'll be something people can celebrate individually or with their families. But we are not going to have the, you know, a couple thousand people standing close, close by. We're, we're not Donald Trump.
Okay. Thank you.
Thankfully.
Anyone else? Thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, fourth of department heads, economic development.
I just want to touch upon what the mayor mentioned, the great article we had today in the, in the record. That stretch of North Street from the square to Orchard, you're looking at 11 new businesses that are open, or about to open. Approximately two dozen new apartments on that stretch. That stretch, for us, for many years, had the most vacancies. So you can see, based on the injection of the DRI funds and private investment, how that stretch of North Street has come about. And they're just great businesses, like the mayor mentioned, a couple of them already are booked to the end of November, December, you know, the services that they're providing. You're looking at millions of dollars that are, have been invested there. So we're just, the positive attitude that came out of, because I had the opportunity to walk with the reporter on Saturday and visit everyone, the positive message was, one of the questions was asked about COVID, obviously, and they said, we're always going to have challenges in life, we're just going to go for it, and we're going to keep moving forward. So that was great to hear from everybody. And, you know, we're here to assist them if they need assistance with loans, or just, just call the office for anything that they need. Also, on another note, our community development program, there was an announcement for, through the CARES Act, another set of funds that were approved, and additional COVID money that we're going to be receiving. We're going to be receiving $250,534 additional to what we've already received. The cumulative amount for COVID relief funds is going to be, through our department, $542,740. So we're going to be setting programs, and obviously, we got to follow all the HUD guidelines and restrictions and stuff, but we're looking forward to assist our community with these funds that we're going to be getting. And that's all I have for this evening, unless anyone has any questions.
Any question for Maria? Thank you, Maria. DPW Commissioner.
Alderman Massey, the reservoirs are at 93% full, which is good, we're in good shape.
90%?
93, 93. 93. I understand, that's why I took the mask off. 93. And, and just, tell it, you know, everybody opens up the faucet and they expect water to come out. And just a reminder, how, how really, how complicated the system is and how much effort it goes to keep, to keep this water running. Monday, which is like Sunday midnight, 12:00 and, 12:00 midnight Monday morning, or, yeah, Monday morning, 12:00, and we get phone calls that there is some water leak, the water treatment plant is losing water, we don't know where it's going. So obviously, two men, Brian, the deputy commissioner, and the foreman, they start going around the city looking for where the leak is. Of course, we have like 75 miles of road in there, this leak is coming out of one-third of the city, so they're looking everywhere, in the woods, in the streets. They can't find it. Usually, the police department, they're a big help for us, because they're driving around all hours of the night, and they see something, they say something to us, they call us immediately if they see water. So, make a long story short, nothing is found until like 3:30 in the morning, after running around, and now it's a matter of controlling where the leak is. Because once the leak happens, water main break, it happens, many times it goes, stays underground for a while, before it bubbles up above ground. So it came out. In the meantime, we lost about 60% of the water storage and the pressure in the Vincent Drive area and in that section of the town, because we lost 60% of the Highland Avenue tank. Fast forward, by 7:30, we control the leak, we start working on it to repair it, and we're very happy after stressful, I mean, when this, when we're talking about it, it's all, it's all fine and dandy, but when it's happening, we're all stressed out, we're trying to find it, locate it, eliminate the leak, stop the leak, control it, and then repair it, and then restore services, and then recovery. So it all happens, so we start relaxing, okay, we know where the leak, we dug it up, the men are working on it to repair it. An hour later, the water treatment plant calls, there's a major water main failure in the basement of the old water treatment plant. So here we are, we're scrambling there, and we go there, and the men, the reason I'm telling you all this story is, it's just how much it takes to keep the system going, and the dedication of our men to get the job done. So they did go underground, under, under, in the basement, very safe condition, however, it's cold water pouring out between pipes, and it's not really confined space, it's a safe space, but still, they had to go struggle, force, basically by, by just brute strength, they had to force the water to seal the leak with the proper repair clamps, and this way eliminate possible contamination of, of, of some, some small well, which we had to control, we anticipated the potential contamination, so we isolated that well. So with that being said, I just want to, I want to extend my gratitude to the men who worked overnight in the water department, and they are unsung heroes, because nobody talks about them, nobody sees them. But everybody was complaining about why the pressure is so low in their area, they can't take a shower, which we understand that. But these are our, really, our local heroes, that they keep us going, and I appreciate it. I'm not going to mention names, because other people who do that job every day, they do the same thing, different locations, and we don't mention them. So my appreciation to all of them for what they have done. Tonight, there are a few resolutions, a couple of resolutions before you. One is for demolition of three buildings in there, so we respectfully request that you approve the, approve the resolution before you to award the contracts for demolition and asbestos abatement for these three buildings. And also, we respectfully request that you approve a resolution awarding the bid, the electrical bid for the screw pumps at the sewer treatment plant to Hariratullah. And with that being said, I will stop. I can give you an update if need be for the construction projects, if you have any questions about them that are going on.
Any question for Jacob? Thank you, Jacob. Fire chief.
Last month, August, we ran 86 calls. So far this month, it's been a busy month, we're up to 43 calls as of a couple hours ago. We did have three fires within the 24-hour period, 18 Ingalls, which turned out to be a cell phone that was left out in the sun, heated it up, the lithium battery, and caught the gazebo on fire. We had Highland Avenue, 16 Highland Avenue, which went to a third alarm. That was a long night. night. That was about five hours there. And then we had a dryer fire the next night that extended into the apartment a little bit, at 31 Woodlake Drive. Thank you to the police department for your assistance at those fires as well. And we have two resolutions tonight, one for a donation from a security company for leadership and dedication to the community, and we have some pagers that were surplusing.
Any question for the chief? Alden Tobin?
In the paper, it said that one of the firefighters had to go to the hospital. Was he okay or?
It was, his oxygen levels were low, so they sent him for evaluation.
Anyone else? Thank you, chief. City Treasurer, anything else?
Well, as you know, the audit is behind us and I think successful. And also, you voted on the ban borrowing. We did $40 million. That's going to come in in August and October at 0.3%. I think that's pretty good. And we're going to start working on the budget, meeting with department heads. Every department head, thank you so much, has got all their budgets in, and we're going to start looking at them first next week.
Thanks, Don. Any question for Don? Thank you, Don. Police Chief.
Good evening. Just a couple of quick things. One, I'd like to report that Officer Barone is healing very well so far. He was in the station with us last week for a meeting, seemed to be very positive, and it's good to see him coming around. So I pray for speedy recovery and a full recovery for him, and we appreciate all the support from the community and from all of you as well. Our neighborhood enhancement unit is back in full force, as well as our dedicated downtown officer, and over the last couple of weeks, as they've been out there, have received a lot of positive feedback from their efforts. And I'd like to just remind people in the community that if you have a concern that you would like addressed, please reach out to us so that we could have the neighborhood officers address that for you. This evening, we have one resolution before you, that is the transfer money from within our budget to cover the body cam program. Just be happy to know, I did receive several boxes from the vendor today, so it's on its way in, and we're on our way to having this go live here, hopefully by the beginning of the year. Other than that, I have nothing.
Any question for the police chief? Alden Tobin?
Someone had a question, I should probably ask the mayor, the governor's executive order, what is the process with that before it comes to us? Is there a public hearing or, I know you guys have met.
So we have met, we have met with our panel. We're in the process of drafting our summary of our meetings. It did get delayed, which is what happened with Officer Barone and that incident that put us back a little bit. I do have a draft on my desk that was submitted today. I'll review that, have it reviewed with the mayor. We'll eventually bring the panel back together to discuss it for their input, to make sure we're on the right track. It'll go before the police commission for their approval, then it would come to the council for your approval and a resolution to adopt the changes.
Is there any public hearings about it or not?
There.
I'm sorry. That's what the question I got.
Yeah, once the document is presented to the council, then the council will hold a public hearing on it. The panel, I think, I'm not sure, I think we're going to present to the panel for input, and then we're going to put their comments in. We're not going to have another public session with the panel. So we're going to, we're going to present the draft to the panel. They can provide any written comment on any issue they want, and then we will include their comments with our recommendations to you as a board. You will then have the opportunity to have a public hearing, discuss it amongst yourselves, and then ultimately vote on the final document, whether you want to make any changes based on any individual panel member's recommendations or on the, anything that you hear from the public. The document must be presented by myself and the chief.
Okay.
So we have to concur on what's in the document to present to you folks.
I just wanted, yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else?
Any other question for chief? Thank you, chief. Superintendent Recreation.
Good evening. As the mayor mentioned, we are doing an employee academic assistant program for our employees. There was a, a lot, like everybody, a lot going on for parents to take care of their kids. The kids have been wonderful. Kudos to Ray Lynn for doing all the paperwork with the state and getting that together, and the staff is great, and it's going really well. If you're a parent working with kids, you know it was a lot to get them online. I think we had 11 in there the first week. And all COVID guidelines being met, and I think the employees are happy, and most importantly, the kids are happy, and it's going well. Some of those kids spend a lot of time on a computer during the day, especially elementary kids. As we talk about computers, just remember all of our social media accounts that we have out there with the rec department has a lot of information about programs we're going to be running that we can run safely and socially distance. The magic shows we were having, if you watched our YouTube page, are huge, you know, a couple hundred people viewing them. They're now even showing you how to do tricks. They're getting huge followings. A cooking class is going to be on there, Cooking Clinic, people have been asking for that, and we have some kids that are actually going to do some comedy skits. So we'll edit them and make sure they're good before they go out, but good for the kids getting involved, and it's something to do. So that's wonderful. I've mentioned before, our pavilions are staying real busy. Even our aldermen are using them for their constituent meetings. So are a lot of other businesses and clubs. Outdoor meeting is it. So we're glad we can help, and a lot of those, we have, if they're working right with our kids and right with our public, we've even waived that price, just trying to help people out. The non-for-profits are really struggling right now. We have a lot of small group activity going. We're holding our programs outdoors. If you were to come by to rec center, the new rec center, Wednesday night, you saw yoga outside, you saw some flag football, you saw a fitness program. We have the KO cardio. Saturday is MVP and Me. It's like a mommy and me program, all outside, all socially distant. We're doing family walks along with the police department up the reservoir. We're going to have a bike ride up at the reservoir. We're going to do more advanced walk up at the reservoir. So things people can get out and do socially distanced, which is really nice. The mayor kind of let the cat out of the bag a little for Halloween here, but we're, yeah, he's going to be in trouble with his daughter because I wasn't allowed to tell. We are collecting candy up to the 23rd in our office. That candy is going to be used for something, her exact words, super secret, socially distant, specially spooky event. So you'll all be surprised about that, but it's going to kind of have a pop-up party mentality, and the police is working very close with us. And you're going to hear a lot more about a lot of little special events that we can do safely for our residents, so really get onto our media accounts. We're going to, we're going to leave them as a surprise. And I thank the, we're always thanking the police department. They're in and working with us, and they go the extra distance to reach out to the public, and that's why things work here in Middletown, and that's no secret. That's no secret at all. One other topic I just want residents to know about, programs are starting. Youth clubs can meet. You know, you see, school teams can't, school teams tamp, but Watts Park, you're seeing activity there. And I want people to know that Little League and soccer have gone through everything they have to do with the state. They get that little permit, they register with the state, that gets on file with us, that certificate. They have to write a safety plan. Their safety plan is posted. If you stop by soccer, you'll see it in English and Spanish, right on the side of the soccer. Temperatures are being taken. They're keeping the spectators socially distanced. But when you go by there, you see so many cars. So people get nervous, but they're following the rules. I was there this evening. We actually had a group there that was not a permit to be there, which makes it look like it's not working, and no masks, and they were addressed with the help of the police department and myself, and educated them how to do it the right way, and that we will help them do it the right way. But you're going to see activity there. If any residents have questions, please call us, but we're monitoring. There's not a lot of parking at Watts Park. President Rodriguez can tell you that. It looks really, really busy there. But there's nine fields there, and we can really spread kids out. And the volunteers that have put these programs together, kudos to them because they're busting their butt so these kids can get out there. Just business-wise, you see a couple resolutions there. I really want to thank the Orange County Runners Club. As you see, they've donated a little over $1,500. We're going to be purchasing and putting four benches up in the reservoir where there's some nice scenic spots for people just to take a seat and look around. And we also, just within our, within our own operating budget, we're going to be transferring some money around just for some further park improvements. It's a great time to do it. And also, we had an old tractor of over 20 years just totally take a dump on us, so we need to replace that. And that's all I have this evening.
Any question for Chris? Thank you, Chris. City Clerk.
Usually, this meeting last year, we do the Halloween curfew, so I held off on doing that, but if you all agree, I'll, we'll put it on the next meeting because we'll have to put it in the newspaper in time, and I usually send it to the schools too, so they know. So that'll be at the next meeting. Also, at the next meeting, we'll be changing the meeting for Election Day because usually it falls on the 3rd, so we'll be doing that on a Monday on the 2nd, and I'll do that for the next meeting also. And that's all I have.
Any question for John? Civil Service.
If anyone signed up for, or you know of anyone that signed up for the firefighter's exam that was supposed to be given on April 25th, it was obviously postponed. We will be giving it on Saturday, October 10th. You'll get a letter about two weeks ahead of time telling you where to go, what time to be there, and to bring that letter with you. We cannot accept any more applications, so if you didn't sign up, you can't sign up now, but if you did sign up, you know someone that signed up, just let them know that yes, the test will be given on October 10th. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, fourth of alderman, Alden Burr.
I'd just like to thank Don, the staff, for another great audit. Thank you very much. And that's all I have this evening.
Alden Johnson.
Yes, good evening. Maria, kudo to you and your staff. It's good to know around this country, we're losing a lot of businesses, but Middletown is doing the opposite. We're bringing business in. That's a good thing to know, especially with the COVID situation going on, and that's very positive for the city of Middletown. Thank you.
Alden Kleiner.
Thank you. We did have our constituents meeting. Andrew may have more to say about it. I want to thank Nikki at Parks and Rec, makes it easy to do those pavilion rentals, and of course, we didn't realize it would be getting dark quite so early this, from last month, so we ended in the dark, but it worked out very well anyway. Our next meeting's not till October 6th, in three weeks. In the meantime, I want to wish to our Jewish community, Happy Ros hashanah. That will be on the 19th. It's year 5781 for the New Year, and successful yom kippur. That will be on September 28th. Also, it will be autumn, so we have that to look forward to. It is getting cold. Last thing, that's where I put it, Thursday, September 17th is Constitution Day. It's the day that in 1787 in Philadelphia, all the delegates signed the Constitution. So I think this year especially, it's important that we recognize and appreciate that document and our attempt at self-government. And lastly, Jacob, thank you. Thank you to the water department and those crews who do any, any time of night, all night long. It's amazing, and it's much appreciated. Thank you.
Alden Rankasun.
I just want to remind everyone in the third ward that we will be having our ward meeting on Tuesday next week at 7:00 PM. We're going to be having it at the Bob Isaac's Pavilion at Maple Hill Park. Looks like the weather's going to be okay. Hopefully, it stays that way. I just want to give a quick shout-out to the school. We started, we've got a week under our belt, and honestly, I expected a lot of glitches, but it really wasn't as bad as I thought it was going to be. So as soon as my six-year-old learns how to use the mute button, I think we'll be all fine. So good luck to all the students.
Alden Johnson.
Thank you. I'll bring candles to the constituents' meeting, just in case I go late.
There are lights.
We have lights. Perfect.
The ladies have lights.
I do want to reflect on the warming station conversation. It's a second ward issue at the moment, but I think it is a city issue. I did not attend the meeting, but I did watch it, and it was actually 2:38, Mayor, just so you know. There was a lot of conversation about process, and I think, as Mayor indicated, to the credit of the temple, both the rabbi and the current president and the previous president, they apologize for not anticipating the conversation that would ensue. I think Ms. Blumenau called it a misstep. So I think it was, it was pretty productive of them to say, we could have done it better. We did, chief did talk about crime. Certainly, we did not have an epidemic of crime when it was downtown, but it still lends itself to the crime of opportunity segment of the world when you walk out and you see residential homes half a block away. Is it a NIMBY thing? Maybe, maybe a little bit. Is it fear of the unknown? There's always fear of the unknown with your child, with your family, with your family vacation, with COVID. It's human nature to be fearful of something if you don't know exactly what it's going to do to you or for you, so I don't fault anybody for that. A couple of questions that I reflected on that left me thinking. Somebody asked the question when they said they were going to take temperatures. The question was, well, what if somebody's temperature is elevated? What would happen? And Pastor Rustico said, that's a good question, I don't know. Well, that's a positive, possible cause for concern if it's 8:00 at night, and I have somebody who doesn't know where they are, and they tell them, you can't come in here. Well, are you going to go for a walk? Are you going to take a cab? What are you going to do? I think that should be addressed. The woman from the Salvation Army, there was a question in process, and when she explained her reasoning, she said, well, the board of the temple would vote first, because if they didn't vote for it, there would be nothing to discuss. Well, I see it the other way. If the board, and I'm not criticizing the board, but conceptually, if you're going to do due diligence, you would canvas the community first, and then you would make a more educated vote on whether you think you should do the program or not. That's just the way I see it, and I could well be wrong. It's happened before. At the very end of the meeting, the rabbi made the comment that we're not responsible for safety of the community. That's law enforcement's job. I gather, talking to others, he's walked that back a little bit, but I found that statement to be disheartening, and once again, that's just me. The mayor has talked about this as a county issue since as long as I've been sitting here on this council. I think we're all aware of the phenomenon of a one-way ticket to a place called Middletown, and have a nice trip. And I will advocate, as the mayor does, small cities do all the heavy lifting, but that doesn't mean it's right that we do all the heavy lifting. And if there was a task force, I called the mayor, he made fun of me for watching the whole meeting, but that's okay too. And I said, if there is a task force, I would be willing to serve on it, depending on what the mission of the task force would be. Because I think we need to continue to beat the drum, that this is a mental health issue, this is a county-wide issue, and Portervis, Middletown, and Newburgh should not be the only communities that bear the brunt of responsibility. And I agree. We all have sympathy. I don't think anybody that's checking into the warming station when they were 17 years old, they said, you know what, when I'm 45, I'm going to be looking for a place to sleep in a basement somewhere because I won't really have the wherewithal to conduct my life. Nobody has that goal, and nobody knew where they were going to land, and I have the compassion for that, but we can have controlled compassion as well, in my opinion. Thank you.
Alden Green.
Thank you very much. I do want to thank everyone who did come out for the 2:38, thank you, Alden Johnson, warming station meeting. Regardless of what your thoughts are and your opinions are on it, it was valued that you were out here to speak about it. I won't say too much more than, Mayor, you recapped the meeting very well, and I do believe a lot of good came out of it, and I do believe that many, many on any side of the conversation are for a task force, so I'd be very happy to, to help out with that as well. Jacob, I do want to, kudos to the water department. We know it's not an easy job, and you're right, they are unsung heroes. So, you know, thank you to everyone who does those jobs that we don't always see in person. A job we do see in person, though, is the fire department, and I do think we owe a great debt of gratitude to our volunteers and our career firemen for the work they've done. It's been quite a busy few, few weeks, and, you know, it only gets colder out, and sometimes it gets harder when the water starts to freeze. So, you know, we wish them all the best, and everyone keep coming home safe. I had the- I had the opportunity to see some people I haven't seen for a while, socially distanced, of course, but one person I haven't seen in almost eight months came up to me and said, I was through downtown Middletown the other day, and it was amazing. She said, the word, I believe, was alive. So, you know, very awesome to see all these new businesses coming in, and really to see downtown start thriving and, you know, watching it spill out into neighborhoods and all the good things that come from that. And I would be remiss if I didn't wish my son a happy birthday, I'm sure, and I hope he's asleep by now, but one-year-old, time flies, so got to make the best of it. Yes, it is. I would say yes, because we're both going to be sleeping on the couch tonight for being here so late. But it is Mayor DeSefano's wife, it is her birthday, so happy birthday as well. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Alvin Tobin?
First, I'd like just to report out, we had a public safety committee meeting. We've had a request for, someone said they were unable to run for a position in the fire department because they were registered for a class that was canceled due to the COVID crisis, and so if anybody else is in that situation, please contact me if we decide to take action or not. I would like to know if it's more than just one person. Also, I'd like to thank Maria for the great job she's doing. People are placing their bets on Middletown, that's great to see, and a lot of them. And Commissioner Twill, there's so many people to thank for the DPW guys getting in the ground, doing all that work keeping our city running. The fire department for the bravery, fighting the fires, you know, the volunteerism, and I might have forgot somebody, but the runners' club, thank you for those benches too, that's great. Appreciate it, or we appreciate it. Thank you.
Alvin Massey?
Nothing this evening. New business?
We have a resolution sponsored by Alvin Johnson to amend the city code to add Chapter 356, plumbers and plumbing standards.
Resolution sponsored by Alvin Johnson, seconded by Alvin Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
No.
Johnson?
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alvin Tobin to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of $44,349.83 within the police department 2020 budget to cover the costs associated with purchasing body cameras.
Resolution sponsored by Alvin Tobin, seconded by Alvin Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alvin Burr to authorize the treasurer to transfer $12,000 within the Recreation and Parks Department 2020 budget due to expenses.
Resolution sponsored by Alvin Burr, seconded by Alvin Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alvin Kleiner to accept a donation, the amount of $1,520, from the Orange Runners Club for the purchase of benches at the Reservoir Trails.
Resolution sponsored by Alvin Kleiner, seconded by Alvin Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alvin Massey to authorize the treasurer to transfer $6,000 within the Recreation and Parks Department 2020 budget to cover shortages of funds.
Resolution sponsored by Alvin Massey, seconded by Alvin Burr. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alvin Green to amend a resolution transfer of 125-20 on July 7, 2020, to correct accounts.
Resolution sponsored by Alvin Green, seconded by Alvin Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alvin Cassoon to accept a donation, an amount of $250, from the Security Mutual Insurance Company to the fire department.
Resolution sponsored by Alvin Cassoon, seconded by Alvin Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alvin Johnson to declare 15 pagers surplus for the fire department.
Resolution sponsored by Alvin Johnson, seconded by Alvin Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alvin Massey to authorize the treasurer to transfer $32,000